I'd like to call the June 21st, 2023 Smithfield School Committee meeting. Before we begin, if you could please stand and say a petition for my.
Hi, I'm Secretary of the District of the Black United States of America. We would all help remove those standing in one nation under God and do this for the greater good of this world.
Public comment signup sheet is in the front. We're going to do it slightly different tonight. There's a comment sheet for if you want to talk on the transgender policy and if you want to talk about any other topic, you'll just put other whatever on. But that's down in front there. Also, we are going to move items nine, 10, and 11 to right after agenda item seven. There are short items that will be done with. And then the other thing I want to let everybody know is down on the table in the front, there is a policy, revised policy, that people can look through. And there's also an amendment, which may be accepted or not, that will also be discussed. Those two sheets if you're interested. Later on, when we do get to discussions, the discussion is limited to new information or comments, anything that's already been said. We've had a number of meetings here between Saturday and March and April, et cetera. Any repeat stuff, we have the ability to stop any redundant information. We also have, I'd like to, the school committee approval.
Thank you very much.
Have a conversation, three minutes, same we did on Saturday. And I'm willing to expand the time. The time says 15 minutes. I'm willing to expand at least for now to 45 minutes if that helps. No objection.
Okay. Are you asking right now? Could I have a little?
Yep.
My concern is based on what I'm seeing with people signing up that 45 minutes may not be enough to hear everyone, so.
Well, why don't we do this? Okay, I have 45 minutes and let's see what happens. If we get there. And like I said, only as we do information, not repeat information. Okay, now we'll move on to item eight, approval of changes to the district's transgender, gender non-conforming, and transitioning students policy. We're going to start off with the thicker document, which is the, I would say, a rewrite of, rewrite, it changes some parts of the policy. This will require a motion.
Motion to approve rewrite, sorry. Motion to approve rewrite of policy. Second.
Motion as made, second. I will explain what is in here. You all have it and can look at it and deal with the differences. It's very similar since first policy, there are, I'm going to highlight what's different. A definition of cisgender has been added in the definition section. Then we go down to the second, third page, excuse me, third page, under the heading of secondary school students. And it adds a paragraph at the end regarding what will be done regarding a policy or the procedure for students that are transitioning. It says, however, if a transitioning student expresses an interest in using a bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity, a meeting between the administration and student's parent slash guardian shall occur. A meeting between the administration and student's parent guardian shall not occur for any student who has an established gender transmission plan and is utilizing a bathroom corresponding with their gender identity prior to the enactment of the amendments to this policy unless the student consents to such a meeting. That's that. And then there's some language you will see there that is crossed out. Then we go over to page six, under restroom, locker room, and changing facilities. And what this does, it says, the department shall develop bathroom and locker room usage protocol in each individual school to be administered by the building administrator for that school. At the elementary level, the protocol shall be administered to the greatest extent practical and considered facility limitations, if any. The protocol shall address, and it says, the parts that are changed, the protocol shall take into account safety, cleanliness, and comfortableness of all students and take into consideration transgender students' gender identity and system of students comfortable with using bathrooms and lockers. Bathrooms should be designated and used in the following way. And then here it breaks it into three different types of jurisdictions, or that's not the right word, three, many age categories. First, there shall be at least one designated male and female bathroom that shall be utilized by all students according to their biological sex. There shall be at least one designated male and female bathroom that may be utilized by all students according to their gender identity. There should be at least one designated unisex, single-person bathroom that may be utilized by any student. The nurses bathrooms are to be utilized by students as a last resort for emergencies only. Nurses bathrooms shall not be utilized as a substitute for any bathroom identified by number of ones or three above. Bathrooms shall be designated as one, two, or three as described above, and such designations shall be evenly distributed throughout the school building to the greatest extent possible. Due to facility limitation, locker rooms will not follow similar designations, however the protocol shall ensure that the locker rooms are safe, clean, private, and comfortable for every student. This protocol shall be developed and published in the student handbook beginning in the 2023 to 24 school year. And I believe that is all of the changes that are in this proposal. What this does is, as opposed to setting up that a person has to go, you know, up three flights of stairs, turn left, and use a facility next to the filing cabinets, everybody will be able to have a facility that they'll be able to use. The, a student that's transitioning will have facilities that they can go to that match their, their gender identity. They can also, as we found out the other day, a number of them do not want to do that. They'll have a bathroom they can go to that matches their biological sex. A cisgender student will be able to utilize a bathroom that matches their biological sex if that's where they feel most comfortable, or they can utilize one that is their gender identity. And then finally, the unisex, single-stall bathrooms will be available so they will be able to have another alternative for any student. The whole idea of this is not to make anybody have just one place they can go and make that place be, you know, off, off the beaten track. For instance, the, I mean, just right here, we have a set of bathrooms over here, good set of bathrooms over here. One may be run away and the other may be another. Same thing on the other side of the cafeteria. We have bathrooms, we could have one on one side and one on the other. That's going to be left up to the physical plan and the administration to come up with that particular arrangement. But the, I firmly believe that meets the definition that the other day, a gentleman from the Department of Ed was talking about, he dealt with an issue in an appropriate way. So this is, I feel, inappropriate. So having said that, there is a second thing, and we, actually, the school committee should, I guess, discuss this first before we get into the amendment.
I, you know, looking through this policy, I honestly don't feel like the bathrooms needed to be changed on the policy. I want every child to be, feel safe and secure with going in a bathroom. And I think as long as children who are, you know, every child that feels safe and supportive, so that means if a cisgender student goes in the bathroom and they don't feel supported, that they're also allowed to step out and go to a different bathroom that they choose, right? Because everybody wants every child to feel supportive in a way. And as long as we set that up and every child knows they're able to use a bathroom that correlates with their gender identity, I feel that would be the best for the students. Bathrooms were not my, not my issue with this policy at all. I feel like it's a really sound policy. It's just, you know, I was struggling with, you know, parent rights and bathrooms were not where I thought it was going with this policy. So I don't feel the way this is written is the best for our district in regards to bathrooms.
You should all have in your packets my second amendment that was delivered this afternoon. And the school committee received it as well. In addition to that, I included some notes that unfortunately were not able to be put into amendment, but here's how I feel about the bathroom policy. It's very possible that the way it's written does not discriminate technically by law. As the policy is drafted today, though, we do feel that it does allow for transgender students to use the bathroom that best fits their identity. It's proposed in such a way in the drafted policy that I think it causes unnecessary stress and anxiety amongst our students. And I did come up with a proposal that I think will be a little more in benefit of everybody. I did review this with the superintendent as well, asking for comment and just to understand if this is feasible. From a facility standpoint, if we were able to accommodate the multi-designated purpose bathrooms, I feel as though it's more effective and inclusive to use the current multi-stall bathrooms as single-stall options. This solution could be implemented simply by installing locks on the main door of our current multi-stall bathrooms. Not all of them, obviously, we have to leave some open, for instance, the one that's outside of this facility that's used for events and whatnot. By providing more single-stall stalls, single-use stalls for all students, we should be able to accommodate this. This would also reduce the risk for any student to have to request special permission to use a single-stall bathroom, which is the way it is today. If single-stall bathrooms were available throughout the building, which obviously we can't accommodate for a capital change, we, again, can simply accommodate this by putting lock on the door, allowing this to be single use. I feel like this removes the stigmatism from, well, the transgender student that has to ask permission to use a single bathroom, or anybody else who may feel uncomfortable to use a single bathroom. It should reduce the amount of fights that we have in bathrooms that we know is, is an issue and other inappropriate activities. These bathrooms, these designated bathrooms would not be allowed to have multi-use students in them, even though technically there are multiple toilets, if you will, within it. I feel like that was an accommodation that can be made, that we can do from a facility standpoint, that has nothing to do with the policy. If the policy could stand as is, only the bathroom part, and we can make that accommodation in the buildings. And I think we were looking for perspective back from our leaders of the buildings and from facilities to find out if that's feasible.
Oh, whoever's comfortable, whoever can answer the question if it's feasible.
Okay.
So we do have, thank you to the principals for being here tonight. So there is a proposal to use the bathrooms, I believe, is it only in the middle and the high school?
Yes.
Okay, not at the elementary school. That would be gender neutral bathrooms of one occupant at a time. That would be a change from multiple. Mr. Kelly or Dr. Bouvet, if you could comment on that, because this is only at the middle and high school, this proposal.
So, from a management and operations standpoint, you are putting, I will speak for Lori, but you're putting my team in an extremely difficult position to manage all of the, of what you just described. On a daily basis, I am chasing 12 boys out of bathrooms all the time. We're chasing, there's this group, we're chasing all over. They're hiding in stalls. They're doing TikTok videos in stalls.
Think about it, school.
Three years ago, we were dealing with TikTok challenges and they were ripping things off of, of the wall. And you're asking to create a single-stall bathroom that they can lock. And, and you're, so how do I get in, how do I monitor that? I don't have the staffing to monitor a whole new building of, of single-stall bathrooms. We're also going to put us in a position during lunch, when I've got 200 kids in a cafeteria, and where kids are constantly running through to the bathroom in that 25-minute period, now we're only having one stall for male, one stall for female, or I'm going to have kids all over the building trying to find these, these stalls. So you're really limiting us and putting us in a tough spot. And I'm questioning if we would even be able to meet health code. It's a separate question that I haven't even thought really much about, to have enough stalls and toilets available, available to students.
So how would we accommodate this when we locked all the bathrooms in the high school?
We have this set of bathrooms down here and a set upstairs, and we have teachers that are at those bathrooms, monitoring that when, as best we can. And then during the lunch, then we open up another set of bathrooms on either side of the cafeteria.
So I wouldn't be asking for anything to change outside that. It would be very similar to that. I understand the concern about having somebody behind a locked door, but.
That's a huge concern.
But that would be the same concern that we all seem to be on board with as far as like in future capital improvements, having these single-stalls. So how would we, how would we moderate it any differently?
I don't, I don't know how we're going with the funding.
No, it doesn't exist today, for sure.
Right.
We don't have a.
Well, this policy reads that it has to be in place for August 29th, the start of school, so.
Yes, for a door to be able to lock, to be able to, I feel like, and I don't want to go down this different path, but I think we have a bigger problem if we can't control our bathrooms differently, or if we're having a problem with the way that kids are behaving in the school.
I'm happy to have a separate conversation around student behavior in bathrooms. I'm happy to have that, but this is kind of just under transgender, going after our trans kids and our LGBTQ kids. You want our conversation about what's happening in our bathrooms? I'm happy to have that. And let's not hide behind going after our LGBTQ kids and making that the catalyst for changing our bathrooms.
We're making a point to make multiple single-stall bathrooms for all students, not just transgender students, not just cisgender students, everybody, just single-stalls.
So Angelo can speak for that, but we don't, you're not going to be able to put that in place in the current setup of this building, on physical plan, to be able to, we're not, we can't add any more bathrooms based off just plumbing and electric and locations. Again, I'll defer more to Angelo on that. So we're not going to be able to add. So now we're, we're going to have to shift, adapt, take away bathrooms from staff. I, that's something that we're, is going to have to require a lot more thought, and I don't think we're ready to make a decision on that, because we have not been consulted really or talked to about how to make that happen.
I can understand that. Again, I don't appreciate how the proposal is just turned around to be something against transgender students when it wasn't teed up in that way whatsoever. This was truly an opportunity that I was looking for, and I understand if it can't be executed tonight, and that my thought may need to be, may need to go into it, but the thought was to provide more single-use stall bathrooms for everybody.
Mr. Kelly, before you leave, could you just, could you just let the school committee know just how many bathrooms that are in existence at the high school so that they have an idea of the number that would be single-stall?
We have, we have four male, four female sets. Then we have the bathrooms in the locker room and the nurses bathroom.
Are all of those open at all times?
No.
So what is open? What are we using?
The ones right here, the new ones that were just developed, that we just spent, redesigned, and the upstairs ones are open during the school day. And then locker rooms are open as well for the PE kids going in and out.
How many stalls are, do we know how many stalls are each?
Off the top of my head.
Sorry. Sorry. Three? So.
Depends on the bathroom.
All right.
Dr. Bouvet, could you answer that same question, certainly at the high school?
Absolutely. We have four sets of bathrooms. There's only one set of bathrooms upstairs. And on the first floor, there are three sets, one in the explorer wing, one opposite the cafeteria, and one in the sixth grade hallway. So we only have four bathrooms in total. Three or four stalls in the bathroom, depending upon the bathroom that you're looking at. But I guess I'm confused with what you were proposing, that I'm taking one whole, your proposal is take one whole set of bathrooms and make it single use, so one student at a time is entering the bathroom, or you're saying each individual stall is going to have a lock? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Not all of them, because that wouldn't be feasible, but for some of the multi-use, multi-student bathrooms to be reduced to only allowing one student at a time. And again, my thought process behind this was knowing that the, so many bathrooms in the building were already closed, that it seemed to be intuitive that opening them to one person at a time would even be an improvement to what happened when they were closed. And that's more particular in the high school when they were closed, so that doesn't reflect on their bathrooms.
Yeah, I just, I'm just not really understanding why we're spending all this time worrying about bathrooms, when it's not an issue where our students are going to the bathroom. My bigger concern is that they flush the toilet and they wash the hands after they leave the facility. That's down there. I really don't see the need for worrying about who gets to go into what bathroom. And in terms of a single use, we do have the nurses bathroom, and there are students that want to use the nurses bathroom for a variety of reasons, that feel more comfortable based on lots of things going on in their lives. And that's important, that that has worked very well, and there has never been any issue with that. So I'm not sure why we're looking to change something that really isn't an issue.
This would be, since that is a bathroom that is somewhere that so many students would like to use, it would be in an aid to try to make that more accessible to other students.
Where are these students who are so uncomfortable using the bathroom? Because I have yet to get a guy. Can I, can I put something in perspective? So I don't know.
I just have to ask one thing. Are you suggesting these students be outed?
Well, I'm sure. No, that you're suggesting about our transgender students.
You made a big deal about it, and now you're.
Well, Richard, if you want to go there.
I got two more emails just the other day, and a person has got me in one of the stores talking about.
So here's the deal. Ultimately.
Here's the deal, I'm just telling you, you say that, that like they're phantoms, they're not phantoms. They appear to be, but.
I don't feel comfortable emailing you, Ben. I'm sorry.
So the reality is, point six, a point six of a percentage point of students 13 to 17-year-old identify as transgender, that equates to four to five students in the high school and three to four students in the middle school. We have wasted two and a half months discussing a problem that does not exist. We have a policy that if these students, and I'm sorry to get, I don't mean to be rude, but, okay, there are, there's certainly our kids who may feel uncomfortable, that's fine, I get that. The policy addresses that. They are allowed to use a single-use bathroom. Now, if the nurse has a backup, and that's not an ideal place to have a single use, and certainly maybe we can look to find a way to expand a single-use bathroom, but if you're in schools, I mean, the second that proposal was putting a lock on a bathroom, I mean, I could see Mr. Kelly's head rate explode, because that's just a liability issue. But we are wasting all this time on a problem that doesn't exist. The policy allows kids who are uncomfortable, if they are uncomfortable, but ultimately, being uncomfortable is not a metric for discrimination. If you want to use that, if you want to use being uncomfortable as a metric of discrimination, we can, we can call up a whole bunch of examples. Our student representative, Henry, you know, people uncomfortable with gay students. Okay, so we're going to isolate them. We had an email from an administrator not too long ago, okay, what if a student's uncomfortable? The student has a medical issue in the, in the classroom. I had a student with a tracheotomy last year, he made breathing sounds when he was, when he was speaking. If someone's uncomfortable with that, can we remove that student from the classroom? I think this entire debate is ludicrous, and I think it's driven by intolerance and fear, and I'm just tired of it.
You know, we've sat up here and, Ben, I don't feel like we've wasted time to hear our community's input on both sides of this. I feel like the disrespect that's been in this room from both sides, everyone needs to stop and know that we're doing this for the children. It's, it's actually, it's so disheartening to see. I feel that all five of us are listening, and I feel like all five of us are reading email. I know I'm spending hours on the phone, I'm calling people, I'm hearing everything out. And to hear, you know, committee members disrespect each other back and forth, it's disheartening to me. It's, it should never happen. We are all adults in this room, we need to act like adults. We're in a community that is small. I love Smithfield, that's why I decided to run for this position, but these past couple months of, you know, sitting up here and getting emails and indirect threats, and it's, it's disheartening. I am honestly so, it's just, it's, it leaves me speechless. It leaves me speechless for people that I, you know, I feel disrespected. When I gave, and we all are giving hours, we're giving hours on end from our families, we're sitting up here, I want to listen to every single person on that microphone, regardless of if you think it might be a waste of time. But thank you to everybody who's come out. You know, we've heard high school kids go, we've heard full-time students, it's just enough to get on that. I don't like public speaking, but I also don't like disrespect. And I think as a community, we need to cut out the disrespect, get back to working for the kids, and that's the end of it.
I don't necessarily feel that we've wasted our time. I think we've spent a good deal of time and we've learned a lot about our community. I do feel, in all honesty, that what's being proposed is physically impossible, and that's part of the problem. You know, I agree with Dan on the thing. If, if, if this is something that's legitimate, it's something that's not going to happen in September, no matter how we do it, unless we tear the whole building apart to find the facilities to make this work. So maybe, maybe we're, I don't know, and I hate to say this, because I really don't want this to go on any longer, but I, I think getting amendments and not having it in front of me doesn't do me any good. I listened and I feel that I understand what you said, but I need to see this. You know, I'm a different, I'm maybe a little older, I'm more tactical, I don't, I don't, you know, as Ben keeps accusing me, I don't do Facebook, basically, because I don't want you to know what I had for breakfast. But we, you know, I, I think, I think if we're going to make amendments, we may not be able to do this whole thing tonight. I really would like to see, I really would like to see us put this to bed, so to speak.
So, A, the reason that I proposed the bathroom in the way that I did was because I did not believe in the way that it was proposed in the draft that was sent to us was feasible and that it created more stress and anxiety for our students. I was immediately ridiculed by the community in front of us, including, I wanted to go down that path, but I was immediately ridiculed for doing that, trying to propose something that I thought would create individual use bathrooms to allow more students to use it. You ask me to listen all the time, I'm asking you to listen as well, okay? I'm okay with the bathroom policy. I do not agree with the way it was drafted in our draft proposal, and I tried to come up with a solution for it. If we can move on and continue talking about the policy and the second amendment, and yes, for those of you who are unaware, we are not allowed to have closed-door sessions. I've seen comments in places that, you know, I hope they discuss this or whatnot, that isn't allowed to happen. We received this draft 24 hours before. I made amendments based on what I thought should happen, and we're not allowed to talk about it until we discuss it up here in front of you. I would have liked to have more discussion about that in a workshop, workshop session, but instead we dedicated four hours to listen to the community, which I also felt was very beneficial. But you need to understand how the process works and that this conversation and this back and forth, this is the only time we're allowed to do that. The amendments that.
Before you go on to the amendments, I want to finish up with this particular thing, because I have to address two things. And it's nice to say that if a student is, feels uncomfortable, they can go off to some private bathroom somewhere. If the exact same thing happened, and that student was transgender, did not feel comfortable, and we said that, it would be wrong. Court cases have said that. Court cases have said you cannot do that. That's what I was getting at, by saying, you have a set of bathrooms, everybody use these, and then you're not good, you've got to go down three flights of stairs and turn left. That's not the case, that cannot be done. So to think that it's just fine to say, oh yeah, they're uncomfortable, send them off somewhere. I don't care what their, their gender identity is, they're pariah when you do that, and that's not right. Courts have clearly said it, okay? The second thing is, while we may not have, you know, people can say we don't have, right now, I run a business, a lot of people run something, and when you, you take stock of what you have in bathrooms, and if you're given a plan, you can come up with something. It doesn't mean we have to go in and rip everything up. I'm hoping that at some point, we improve all these bathrooms to some degree, but. But that's, that part is going to be down the road. But as far as what you have right now, you take your given stock, here's what we got to come up with, we've come up with. Now, I can clear, clearly hear that my four colleagues don't like that particular plan. So that's fine. We will now move on to the second draft.
I have one of those.
Yes, go ahead.
In this original draft, it does go over briefly locker rooms, duty dedications, however, protocol. Have we ever thought about making, changing optional for kids? I don't know. I feel like as long as they're wearing athletic wear to school in the appropriate gym, have we ever thought about maybe making it optional to make everyone feel comfortable? Or, that's everybody, I mean, not everyone likes changing. You know, it's, I mean, I don't know on this, or if that's something we have to review after. But just looking at this locker room and saying, we don't have the facilities, we don't have everything, maybe that could be a, kind of like a simple solution. You know, like a changing optional for all students. And Tony, you were, you know, you were in athletics, I don't know. Kids get sweaty, but you put on clothes and they're still sweaty, they're not showering.
I think what's happening though is, is we keep expanding this. You know, we keep finding something else. And that's what I said about the fact that we're, we're, we're doing something and, and as you said, we can't really talk about this at some point, like, you know, as a group, where we could, you know, bang each other over the head in private, which is probably much better than what we're doing now. And I, I really, I really, you know, again, I, I like to view things. I understand what you just said and the same thing before. At some point, at some point, I'd like to sit down and, and actually, instead of looking at pieces-
Right.
You know, and say, what is, what is this final proposal? Right now, I've got, you know, I've got red over here, I've got another sheet with a little piece over here changing. You know, we just, you know, we've just talked about a couple of changes and things, what went on. You know, we don't have, I don't, I don't, I want to look at the whole thing. Not the whole thing, but I want to, I want to look at the changes-
I think those changes will come as we-
With their final appearance.
Right. I think as we're talking and have an open conversation, those changes are more likely to be in the policy, right? Like, as we're having this conversation, that's where we could get another, another draft of it. That's why I was just saying for locker rooms, if we could potentially make changing optional-
It's difficult to get a consensus when you really don't, when you're really not positive of what you're talking about.
Right.
Right. But I, so I, I don't disagree with that whatsoever. But I think myself and anybody in this room, regardless of how they feel, would like to move on from this as quickly as possible. So if there is an opportunity to come to an agreement tonight, I think it is in everyone's best interest to do that. I think that based on what Richard just said, he heard that four other members didn't agree with the bathroom changes. What Amanda was saying, I don't know that necessarily has to be worked in here. The, the changing for gym has nothing to do with the transgender policy. It's just something that we can change that benefits all students. I, I would love for kids to change. I'd love for them to be able to shower too, but they can't do any of that. So if they're not showering and they're getting sweaty and they're putting the same clothes on, to each their own. I'm fine with that. I think it's something that we can still discuss. And it doesn't have to be moved tonight. And we can review the other piece of the agenda item that we discussed as well. The amendment.
All right, thank you. Just, you can, one second. I'm just discussing with the attorney how we're doing this. And if you want to make an amendment, then what that will require is a motion to accept the amendment. And a second, then this conversation will be strictly on this amendment, which she will, she will explain. And then at that point, we would take a vote to see if that language, and the reason I'm going to say this, is that language actually replaces a couple of pages here, is something we want to go with. And if it is, or not, then we would take a motion on the remaining overall policy, okay? That needs further clarification, I will try to get it. But right now, we need a motion to accept an amendment that Ms. Salo will explain once we have that.
Motion to accept the amendment.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, the motion that is made, second. And this motion is, just so people following along, if you look on your third page, it has some capital letters, protocols for students who identify as transitioning, transgender, gender nonconforming. It changes language on that down at the bottom. I will let Ms. Salo explain that and vote, I think, also on the second page as well.
Yes. So in the larger packet that you received, is the initial draft that we received yesterday. The single individual piece of paper has my amendment to it. It, it doesn't make any changes to the top of the paragraph. I don't think I need to read it through for all of you. The part that it changes at, it strikes all of the comments that are in red on your first copy, and it adds this part. It says, "As part of the gender transition plan, the school shall put into place measures that will be taken to work with the student to involve their parent guardian. Such measures shall occur no less than once per month. And each measure and occurrence shall be documented and maintained within the gender transition plan. In extreme situations where a child's safety and well-being are determined to be a risk, the administration should address such concerns as they would with any other disclosed information regarding the safety of a child." What I'm trying to accomplish with this, with this change in this policy is to put more guardrails around the current gender support transition plan, okay? This would not put a timeline, this would not require a teacher or anyone to call the parent and tell them right away where to get this information. But it would require you to put more of an effort in. Because based on what I heard on Saturday, that wasn't happening thus far. And if it was happening, we were all confused about it, and it certainly wasn't clearly complicated. I'm asking for more guidelines to be put in. If we truly are a community that we say that we put parents first, and that's what we want to highlight, then we need to show that in the plan. And then we need to make sure that you're held accountable to follow that plan. Okay, I think that's needed. Excuse me?
No, four, one, I got nothing. Not no back and forth, please. We will have people be able to talk in a few minutes.
Mr. Shaw. I just, just for clarification, I guess we addressed to you, but to Jess, so just to be clarification. This is, two things. One, this is the email we got, right before the meeting. Correct. So that's the same exact language. Second, so just for my own clarification, I think I understand what you're trying to say. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm on the same page as you. You are removing the original proposal that would have required a parent notification if the student wished to use a ba-, a bathroom that correspond to gender identity. Instead, that mandate is gone, but you're asking for a check-in once a month for students who are on a transition plan?
Yes. And I'm asking for it to be documented and for it to include always in the conversation the encouragement for involving the parent guardian.
So we are, so your proposal is to remove the mandate, the mandate of reporting, okay?
Do you want to say it three more times for me to answer? Yes, do it. I feel like you're, I answered it.
I'm, I'm actually, Jess, I'm very pleased with your amendment. So I just want to make sure, for clarification, I, I guess I'm a little slow tonight. I get up real early. So I'm very, I think this is, I can support this. As long as our high school staff feels that they can manage checking in with the students once a month. I don't know how many students are actually on a transition plan. But in this respects, I certainly, I have no problem with this. I think this is a very reasonable amendment.
Also, just so you know, for the first time tonight, the school committee received the gender transition support plan. And before I sat down at this desk tonight, I had never seen this plan. So I appreciate it being in front of us tonight. I do think it's a little late to the game. And I do think we can make improvements to this plan to make everybody feel better.
Okay, so, school committee question. Do you need to understand that that entire paragraph down at the bottom of the original plan, that's in red, is out and it's been replaced with this language that you just read, which is underlined in the second page?
So-
No, wait, discussion first.
Can I make a motion to strike the first part without, and to accept the next?
We can't, we can't talk about that. Yeah, you already have a motion on the floor to accept the changes that you just proposed.
Okay.
The way, the way the vote will take place is, it will be on this first, this discussion that we have here. And if the committee does that, then we have taken this plan, added this language. Then I will come back to this. And if you want to at that point, delete all that, those pages on the bathrooms, that's when that will be done, once the overall- Okay. But I need to find out, the school committee any questions? If not, now we have a public comment. So publicly, technically, it's a public discussion. So we're going to keep it to three minutes? No, we don't have to move, we want to talk. If people want to talk, they got to, how would be clear then? Do you want to take the other comment?
Yeah, just to be clear, this is public comment on this topic only?
We know for sure what the comment is.
You, I think you can ask questions during the comment. So, let me rephrase that into you and the question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, so what has taken place right now is, you have, one, the overall policy, that's the bigger of the two documents. What was discussed and just, a motion was made, was pertaining to the secondary school students. And as, as the committee member explained, that would take away mandatory notification of parents. What we're going to do now is, although that's what's before the committee, because there is a lot of concern about the overall policy, we're going to take comments from any and everyone who signed up to talk about any piece of a policy that they would like to discuss. So it's any and everything. But understand that procedurally, they're going to be just simply voting on this particular amendment. But just to make this efficient for everyone tonight, please go ahead and make your comments on any part of the policy. And if there's any clarification or questions you have, we can answer them.
So in a nutshell, that's, there's two major things we've discussed. One was a bathroom policy. And the second one had to do with notification of parents, which had one set of language out there. And then amended by Ms. Salo to replace that with another set of language. So that's what we're talking about. So, Mr. Kelly, were you-
So I just, I just wanted to, some clarification on Ms. Salo's language. So are you, if we, if a student has already come out to a parent and they're already a part of that conversation and had been from the beginning, do I need to still have a monthly meeting? Or is this just for students that have not?
I feel like if a student is part of a plan that they have requested specific to this, that everyone still benefits from a monthly check-in.
For a monthly check-in, okay.
All right, clarification, thank you. Okay, start off with Polly Crozier, I believe it is. Yeah, that one, we know works. So we just, people keep the comments to approximately three minutes and we should be good.
Good evening, thanks so much for having me. My name is Patience Crozier, otherwise known as Polly. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm the Director of Family Advocacy at GLTQ, Legal Advocates and Defenders. For those of you who might not know, GLAD works in New England and nationally to promote equality on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, and HIV status. And my colleague Jennifer Levi was one of the first people to litigate a case about transgender inclusion in schools that focused on bathrooms. That was in vain. And we've come a long way since that case. I think to understanding that transgender students are such an important part of our community and our schools. They just want to go to school like everybody else. And being able to access the bathroom consistent with their gender identity is essentially required by the law, state law, federal law, the Americans with Disabilities Act. So I, I wish I could have been here on Saturday and had a family event to participate in that conversation. I've appreciated hearing the amendment today. I think the amendment makes a lot of sense. I do think a monthly meeting, particularly for students who are in conversation with their parents, might be a little too much. Just burdensome administratively, and I'm married to a high school principal, so I know how hard schools work. Burdensome administratively, and also for, for a student for whom, you know, school is going well, the plan is working, a monthly meeting just interrupts their flow. They don't need it. I do think that it is important to remember that schools, students, and parents are all working together, I think, to benefit the well-being of students. So anyway, I think with that particular amendment, I think it makes sense to have check-ins and to have encouragement for a student who doesn't feel yet able to talk to their parent, to have that encouragement, to have that conversation with a trusted adult at school. I just don't think a monthly check-in is necessary. On the bathroom piece, I must confess to being a little confused about where you are. Sorry, it was late, there was a lot of traffic. But I will say, I think the law is pretty clear. Well, it's not pretty clear, it's clear. That you can exclude a transgender student from a bathroom. They have to be able to use a bathroom consistent with their gender identity. I don't think, it sounds like there's not a problem in this community that can't be addressed through education, through community discussion. I think that if you exclude transgender students from bathrooms and have a bathroom according to their biological sex, I think you're clearly in violation of the law. I don't think you want to use school resources to litigate that situation. I think you want to build a community where students feel safe and included at school. So I'm, you know, I reached out to your counsel earlier today. I look forward to, I'd love to have further conversations to discuss my perspective. I didn't have very long to review this policy. I think it needs more baking. I think we need to sit back and hit pause or hopefully vote against it. I think you students in your community would greatly appreciate maintaining, from what I understand, from what I've heard from the community, maintaining a current policy and promoting a school community of inclusion for everybody. Thank you so much.
Ryan Fontaine. Okay, then we have Tom Alberg.
Thank you. Thanks, I had some prepared remarks, I'm not going to say now. So I am very pleased with the direction of where this is headed tonight. So basically, the policy as it was originally sent out with the red line, the school committee was trying to create a lot of contradictions with, sorry, can you hear me? Okay. With, with, you know, making sure we are being inclusive, not discriminating, not harassing, et cetera, et cetera. So it sounds like we're kind of good there. As long as we're not touching the bathroom situation, it sounds like we're okay. The way it was written before, you know, just, we don't want to be creating a separate but equal Jim Crow law-
Yes.
Issue here, right? So, I'll try to do that. I also tend to agree with the woman that was just up here talking about, you know, with the new language. And again, thank you for the new language. Thank you for people being open to having their minds exchanged. I really appreciate it. I kind of, I tend to agree, if you have a plan that's working, you know, you probably don't need that much of a check-in. I think, you know, it's just, she said it far better than I could. So thank you very much for showing up today. That's it, I'm very encouraged by the way this went today. It's much better than Saturday, so thank you.
Good evening. I've been reading a letter that was sent to the school committee just for the public to hear. It was from someone who was hoping to get here tonight. It's a retired, formerly board-certified around pediatrician, who's now on the American College of Pediatrics Advisory Board and an advocate for protecting children. It's labeled transparency benefits, parents and youth, a testimony by Dr. Andre von Moll and Dr. Michelle Cordella M.D. by Dr. Andre von Moll and Dr. Michelle Credella, M.D. Dear Smithfield School Committee members, embracing a policy of transparency between schools and parents in regards to gender, student gender identity will ultimately land Smithfield Public Schools on the right side of history. However, maintaining the current ride policy of serpeditiously aiding the social transition of gender dysphoric students without parental knowledge will likely result to the deluge of lawsuits by irreversibly damaging former students in the not-too-distant future. This is because social transition sends youth down a dangerous experimental path that often leads to permanent harm, which may not be realized until 10 years following the start of transition. Socially affirming cross-gender identity is not harmless. Social affirmation leads to persistence of cross-gender identification. Therefore, the American Psychological Association's Handbook on Sexuality and Psychology states that, quote, "premature labeling of gender identity should be avoided." This approach runs the risk of neglecting individual problems the child might be experiencing. Premature social affirmation that also sends the youth down the path of the dangerous lifelong medical and surgical gender transition procedures, including puberty blockers, hormones, et cetera. Contrary to popular belief, these interventions are not proven effective, not proven safe, do not reduce suicides, and are not the standard of care for gender dysphoria. Automatic affirmation of social, medical, and/or surgical transition is a dangerous experiment in which public schools should not participate. Schools should not, should facilitate child-parent communication, especially considering gender identity and mental health, and then respect the right and responsibility of parents to review their options and to make healthcare decisions together with their family. Respectfully, Andre von Moll, M.D., board certified California Family Physician, co-chair of Council on Adolescent Sexuality, American College of Pediatricians, co-chair. And Michelle Credella, M.D., Rhode Island pediatrician retired, formerly board certified, co-chair Council on Adolescent Sexuality, American College of Pediatricians Advisory Boards, advocates protecting children. I had agreed to come up and read this tonight because we kept hearing, listening to experts, but it kind of almost reminds me a little bit of COVID, where a lot of it can sometimes just be a lot very one-sided. You know, there were stops from the crowd at the testimony of Dr. Eric Anderson. So that's a sentence, agreed to come up and read this one, since he couldn't make the trip up to Smithfield tonight. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Anthony Pado.
Hi, I'm Anthony Pado. I am a graduate of Smithfield High School, from last year, 2014. I definitely had a bit more to say previous to the amendment. I'm happy to see the direction that it's going. However, I think that the severity of it and why so many people did have an issue with it goes so much beyond bathrooms in general. So I brought some statistics just to kind of illuminate that. The fact that 56% of youth trans have attempted suicide, the fact that 86% are considered suicidal, the fact that less than 1 in 3 trans youth currently find their homes to be gender-affirming, and less than 51% find their schools to be. So by introducing these gender-affirming spaces, we can drastically reduce these statistics and create a safer place for our students. There was a study done by Price and Fidiel on the impact of bathroom discrimination on mental health amongst trans and non-binary youths in 2020 from the Journal of Adolescent Health, that said that 58% of trans, non-binary youth reported bathroom discrimination, and of that 58%, 85% reported depression and 60% seriously considered suicide. There were 1 in 3 reported one suicide attempt and then 1 in 5 reported multiple. In Tomaal, 2021, found that over 39% of transgender adolescents reported physical abuse from their other parents or loved ones. 19% reported sexual abuse from their parents or loved ones. And that's a much higher percentage because as compared to their cisgender counterparts. Now, that kind of goes into the sense of who's to say what's a safe home for their transgender youth? Who gets to decide that besides the trans individual? The reason why I'm saying all this is because everybody, every child should have a right to come out when they're ready, to who they're ready. It's not us as a parent to decide when they're ready. And allowing these gender-affirming spaces within the high school can allow for a safe environment for these trans individuals to lower that rate of suicidality and eventually have a better mental health long-term. Thank you.
Mary Ann Iacello.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Iacello. My three children graduated from the Smithfield School System. I was an involved parent and I would have certainly expected to hear from the school regarding any issue with my student. So why on earth do I care about this policy change when my kids are no longer here in the system? I'm the mom of an amazing transgender woman. Through my daughter, through my daughter and through my involvement with P-Fly Rhode Island, I have met trans individuals who were abused, neglected, kicked out, discriminated against by both their families and their friends. These are the marginalized minorities who would be hurt by this change. You have heard firsthand about the suicide rates among the transgender community who are not supported. Isn't every life worth protecting? There is absolutely no reason to change a policy that works and protects a small percentage of students, and it certainly does not take away any parental rights. Thank you for listening and I'm encouraged by what I hear tonight. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for volunteering your time. I have something written down that I'm not going to say because I don't feel like I need to say it because I've heard it said already. And I am very happy to hear about what I think maybe could be written as good faith effort measures to make contact with parents. But I don't, I also agree that it isn't necessarily to create a specific timeline. My name is Colleen Judge and I am an expert, I'm an expert on youth. I'm a licensed mental health counselor and I have more than 25 years of experience working with youth in schools, in private practice. And I have seen firsthand among families rejection of young people who identify as non-binary and transgender. And I've seen young people who are exploring who they are in middle school and in high school. And they do need to feel safe. And I believe that you had a policy in place and you have a policy in place that is working. It's working well and it doesn't need to be changed. And I'm happy to hear that it may not be changed. I also am a parent of four young people who've gone through Smithfield High School. I moved here 30 years ago from out of state and I found this to be an incredibly safe and supportive town. My kids had very positive experiences and their LGBTQ+ friends had very positive experiences. I remember young people speaking on this stage and talking about how accepting this community was. I don't know what's changed. I hope that we can stay an inclusive and accepting environment. Any way that I can help and support the youth of this school, as well as the administration and the stress that is on them, I'm happy to do so. Thank you very much for all of your work on this. I don't think it was a waste of time because I think voices need to be heard. But most importantly, our children need to be supported, they need to be loved, and they need time. They need time to explore who they are and they need to feel safe in their homes and in their schools. And you people are people in the schools who can support them if they don't feel supported at home. Please know that some of them are not supported at home. Thank you.
Chris Pallotti, parent of his good guilt. Couple of things. First, you know, I think the entire transgender policy needs to be looked at from the perspective that we should not be encouraging kids to transition at all. Think when a young child or a teen approaches an adult to say that they're uncomfortable with their bodies, the last thing that we should be saying is that you need to change yourself or change your body. If that was a person who had an obesity problem, we would all be mortified at the fact that somebody was saying that that person had to change themselves. But now when we're talking about somebody who's uncomfortable.
Wow. All right, we'll have to ask.
That's impressive.
No, hold on. Okay, that's one warning for your next time, at least we'll remove it. But that is above the.
And Joe, by the way. So I also wanted to ask, I really want to get through this before I get an answer, but is, what is the school's policy when a child changes their mind? So let's say a child comes and says, you know, I want to identify as a gender other than my biological sex. And then, you know, months or years later says, I changed my mind. Is the school supportive of that child or equally supportive of that child in that case? And, you know, for, you know, Mr. Case, I just want to say, I know a lot of kids are not coming forward, but there's a couple of things that you should think about. Number one, the line at the nurse's bathroom, which is pretty absurd, is a clear sign that there's discomfort. And number two, the last school committee election, which was a landslide victory for Republicans, primarily because there is a silent majority that is afraid to speak up for reasons like that, outbursts, who are the majority by far in this town that are very comfortable with the way things are going, but aren't afraid to speak out loud. But when they're in the privacy of a voting booth, have no problem voicing their opinion. And then with regard to the stalls in the bathroom, I just wanted to say, you know, committee member Sala mentioned locking doors at the outside of the bathrooms themselves. But it's entirely possible, I'll just finish for one second. It is possible and it's probably not super expensive to put in full-size walls and full-size solid locking doors on each stall. And then instead of saying, this is the women's room and this is the men's room, both bathrooms are gender-neutral. I think every kid can be comfortable like using the sink together. I've seen this in, I saw it in a grammar school, a private grammar school in Providence. It's not very expensive and it may be a solution for everybody.
Thank you very much. Mike Morabli.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Mike Morabli, lifelong Smithfield resident. I'm here for one reason. On Saturday morning, I booed one of the speakers. I wanted to sincerely apologize to that speaker. It was very disrespectful. And I apologize sincerely for that. I also want to apologize to the school board, the school committee for that, also everyone in attendance on Saturday morning. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Luke Robbins. Am I right?
Yeah. So I want to start by thanking you for the amendment language that we're hearing today. I do have a couple of remarks. I think it is just kind of a, something to consider as we move forward with these discussions and these votes. So I'll just kick it right off. Positive, respectful, inclusive, dedicated, empowering. These are the school-wide expectations for Smithfield High School and undoubtedly tenants are well aware of. I think it's important to reflect on each of these commitments before casting the vote. Do these changes intend to make a creative, positive change for all students? Are these changes respectful of all students' personal privacy and respectful of their self-discovery? Are these changes inclusive to all gender identities' sexual expression in classified as protected classes under Rhode Island law? Do these changes reflect the dedication of school faculty and staff to keep all students safe in their academic environments? And finally, do these changes empower students to be the best versions of themselves in the classroom, playing field, stage, art room, and beyond? If the answer to any of these questions is no, I strongly urge the board to seriously consider how these changes will affect students at Smithfield High School. Should the board make these changes, I urge you also consider to amend the school-wide expectations to reflect the new policy. Thank you.
Tim Faulkner.
Thank you, Jeremy. I appreciate that the amendment takes away the attempt to assert parental rights over the student's privacy. But this new policy, even as amended, is a mess and a big problem. No offense. Begins, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that the Smithfield School Department is in full compliance with the following. Rhode Island Department of Education's guidance for Rhode Island schools on transgender and gender nonperforming students. It does not. Do you think that this policy conforms to the May 16th, I mean, May 2016 guidelines? The May 2016 guidelines explicitly state students' privacy rights and it also explicitly states that any student has the opportunity to use a bathroom of the gender that they identify with. This policy, even with a nice amendment to not forcibly out students, is still mandating bathrooms determined by biological sex. And this is clearly and obviously illegal. This is why sometimes a word that people don't like comes up. Because this is clearly illegal and it is clearly intended to discriminate against the class of students which are protected in this state. Likewise, some of the language that gets dropped is actually about, you know, in the case of when a student feels at risk, working with the family. That actually gets dropped. You're actually dropping the language about trying to create the best, safest environment where you're working with students. Later on, you actually still keep in whether or not parents are involved with the policy or not. Based on the original draft, you would actually, a student would actually have privacy rights up until the moment that they make a choice about the bathroom. All of a sudden, you guys respect the student's privacy. So I want to know, do we respect students and their privacy? Because that was the big concern for the people who think we need to make a change. But now all of a sudden, we're accepting that, yes, students grow into their own and have their own privacy even from their parents. So what are we doing? There is no need to change any of this policy. The people that want to change convoluted bathrooms and parental rights to create a massive legal document that is not compliant with any state or federal law. massive legal document that is not compliant with any state or federal law and is just nonsense. And this is a problem even with the amendments, which are becoming a little bit more inclusive and understanding. Thank you.
Mark Lambert.
Good evening. Thank you for the time you spent on the Board. Just a couple of comments. I understand the bathroom issue is a challenging, very problematic area for you guys to delve into. And one comment I'll make it with respect to that, because I really haven't, I got the changes, no real opportunity to adjust what was proposed. I think single-use bathrooms, given the environment we've now gone, found ourselves in, are a benefit to multiple students, whether that's transgender students who may not feel comfortable in either set of bathrooms with either biological males or biological females, or some of the biological males or biological females who may not be comfortable in bathrooms with transgender male, transgender boys and girls. Right? So, and I understand logistically from a building standpoint, that may create some challenges. So going forward, if you guys look at bathrooms in the context of your policy, I would encourage you to consider some level of single-use facilities that I think will help solve the problem for some of the kids, not all, but some of the kids. I could go on and talk about this topic for hours, but I'll try to be more concise. I served on a school board when I lived in Connecticut. I came here to generally observe what was going on. One of the things that I am disheartened by is the response that you got from your administrative professionals. You asked them specific questions about how to manage facilities, and rather than respond to those questions, they decided to provide their own opinion on the topic. That is, in my perspective, unprofessional. Right? Your job here in this capacity is to serve the school district. You're welcome to have your own opinions, and if you want to come up here in the context of a public forum and express your opinion, you're more than welcome to do that. I think that would be appropriate, but in your capacity as a representative of the Smithfield School District, you should be responding to that and leaving your opinions outside for the proper forum. I appreciate that multiple members feel passionate about this. I would encourage you to have respect, like, I respect your right to have your opinions. Passion is strong. I think it's important that you keep in mind that other people share that same passion and opinion, it just may happen to be just different than yours. So I keep that in mind going forward. With respect to the changes that are being made, and this is in the context of the whole policy, I'm having a hard time understanding the concept, and I'm not sure if the previous speaker was an attorney to making his claims that it's illegal, what your policy states. I'm not an attorney, so I can't make that claim. But I find it hard, as a parent, and I understand, to understand how you guys can say notifying parents doesn't make sense. I challenge anybody here who has a child and tell me you don't want to know what's going on with your child and what's going on in their life. We've had multiple speakers that have talked about the suicide rate of transgender children. If these kids are truly at risk, then you should be informing the parents, because as a parent, I would not want to lose my child and have no idea what's been happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Rob Ben Soonus, no one ever gets it right, so get used to that after 50 years. Pleasantly surprised at what you guys did tonight, so I thank you guys for doing the amendments. One of the things I was going to say before Ms. Sala had said that is, on Saturday, Mr. Kelly came up, you guys didn't even know the procedures if a kid wants to change their pronoun. How can you want to change a policy that won't be administrators have been up here, kids with zero, zero percent rate? You don't know the policies and procedures, but yet you want to change it. Same thing with the bathrooms. You don't even know how many bathrooms are here or where they are. How can you just say we're going to change an amendment without knowing? There's no due diligence here. So please, going forward, do your due diligence. And as it comes to the experts, you and I, we're not experts, right? We're not. But the experts came, we had Thundermist, the Providence Community Center over the last couple of weeks, social worker, psychologist, and even the kids came up here. They gave you their actual fact, we've had facts tonight, facts, facts, not one physician, oh yeah, that's real smart, put me off, right? One physician, it's the facts, the scientific facts. Please, use facts. And the last thing I'll say is I want to give a big applause to the kids who have come up here over the last couple of months. It's all been a hot dog. Because you are the future of this. So I applaud all of you kids, because no kid should have to come up here and explain their sexuality to you. So please, going forward, respect them and do your due diligence going forward. Thank you.
Hi there, Julie Dorsey. I'm a parent of three, as I said on Saturday, who all are either in the Smithfield Public Schools or done with Smithfield Public Schools. So to that man who wonders, how can you not know every single thing your kids are doing? You won't, because you've raised them to be mature individuals who can make decisions on their own and who can find positive, wonderful adults that they can go to, because they don't want to tell their parents everything. I do want to thank the committee, because I am really appreciating the changes that I'm seeing here. I assume from what the chairperson said that these bathroom policy changes will not be going through. He did say for, I assume, so I assume they're not going through, because it did feel separate but equal. It did feel back to a time that we do not want to go back to, where whites used one bathroom and blacks used another bathroom. So that is the proposal, that transgender would use one bathroom, cisgender would use another. It's just not something that's okay in Smithfield, it's not okay anywhere, and I'm thrilled to see that we're not going forward with that. That's really all for me. Thank you for your time.
On the floor, which we will hold on, which is on your page, and what that does basically... Okay, excuse me, there were two more. Wendy Becker.
Hi, thank you so much. I teach social work at Rhode Island College, was a clinical social worker in schools, and have worked with kids as a therapist for decades. I wasn't going to testify again, because I spoke on Saturday, but I wanted to make sure I provide some context to testimony from a man who spoke earlier, reading testimony from physicians calling them experts. The two people who wrote that letter are well-known anti-gay and anti-trans physicians who serve on the board of major conversion therapy organizations nationally. They are well-known to all of us in this field. They have broken off from the American Academy of Pediatrics to form a separate organization that is dedicated to anti-LGBTQ policy nationally. They are not only not experts on this subject, but their ideas are repudiated by all of the major psychological and medical organizations. So I wanted to do that, but I also wanted to thank you very much for the amendment regarding not outing trans kids. The coming-out process is really something that has to be theirs, not ours. It is critically important that it proceeds at a pace that is comfortable for the student when they have the language to do so and when the safety they need to tell their truth exists. So thank you so much for reconsidering it. I think that it is surprising, it shouldn't be, but it's surprising when we have a hearing on Saturday and hear testimony from people and it actually changes your mind. So thank you very much for that.
So, I'm Clarice, I'm a pediatrician, child adolescent psychiatrist, but I completely agree that we should be basing, you know, our ideas on one physician or two physicians' ideas of what is evidence or what is best for children. And Wendy just did a really wonderful job of saying a lot of the things that I was going to say, standing-up care, which is that the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is our main professional governing body, says that gender-affirming care, supporting our transgender youth, is extremely important and is something that saves lives. So I think it's extremely important that we have, like, the actual facts out there, but, so thank you, Wendy, for bringing that up. And so I guess, since you already have, I'll just talk about my experience very briefly with taking care of youth in Rhode Island. And I've taken care of cisgender, transgender patients, I've taken care of kids as young as three, or actually newborn in pediatrics, and adults as old as 86. And the number of times that I've had children, adolescents, come to me and talk to me about the distress that they've had around using the bathroom in high school when they're transgender is pretty extreme. I think it's something that comes up countless times for adolescents who are dealing with some really difficult things. They're dealing with, you know, trying to fit in socially, they're trying to deal with, you know, academics, they're trying to deal with how to talk to their families about these things. And something as simple as going to the bathroom is something that might out them to their friends, to their family, luckily they're changing the policy, so hopefully that won't happen here. And I think that something that a school can do to show support for some of our most vulnerable children is making something as simple as going to the bathroom, something that doesn't cause them extreme distress, cause them to come into my office and talk to me about, you know, how this is something that's causing them to think about wanting to hurt themselves, causing them to think about not wanting to be in school anymore. So I really hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
We now have a motion for amendment to the policy that you had in front of you. And that motion, if you accept it, would replace pages three and four in the full policy with what's in this one page. Okay, so that's pages three and four. We'll take any comments by the school committee and vote on that first before we vote on the overall motion. Any comments or questions? Okay, the motion has been made to replace, like I said, pages three and four with what's on this sheet. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Now, we're going to take up the entire process, which is the full policy, and we have replaced pages three and four with that, and if the pleasure of the committee is to get rid of pages, the red part of pages six and seven, then now would be the time to make a motion to delete that or revert to the language that was there.
Mr. Chair, just clarification. So if we, if we do, if someone does make a motion to replace the current red text here in the current draft...
On page six and seven.
Do we revert to the original language from the, okay, so is that, that needs to be part of the motion? I'm not sure how that works.
The motion would simply be to remove the amendment pertaining to the bathrooms. So that will revert back to the original language in the original policy, essentially unchanged. The bulk of that red, what you see there, red print, is new language. There's a few things that are crossed out, which would be back into the policy.
Okay. So I can make that motion, I just, please make sure I'm wording it correctly, that we are, are we rejecting the amended language?
Yes, that's fine.
We are rejecting amended language under the restroom, locker room, and changing facilities sections of the transgender non-conforming policy.
Will that be accurate? Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Okay, this is, this motion would remove the language that was in the, the red parts that was in this. Questions or comments from the committee? If none, I will say one thing, and that is... And I will say that, while we are taking this out, I, it's probably ahead of its time. I do think, I don't think that it is the evil thing that people thought it was, because when I went through everything on that, everybody had rights to go where everybody wanted to end up. It's characterized differently, and I will honor what the school committee thinks, but, so I will agree to that, but I don't think it's as far off as it has, it's been portrayed. So all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, sorry, just before we vote, I just, Mr. Morabli, I don't know if he's still here, is he still here, Mr. Morabli? You inspired me. I lost my cool earlier. I apologize, it's been a stressful couple of months, and I let it get the best of me tonight, so I apologize to Ms. Sala and anyone else who was offended. I acted unprofessionally, I just, I'm happy to hear that we've worked together to make some changes that I think we can all be happy with. So my apologies, and hopefully we can continue working together collegially as we move forward.
Okay, so we're voting on the second amendment here, that is, to deal with removing the languages. If there's no further questions?
I just have...
Yes.
Is it possible for, I guess it's a school question, but just to let every student know that they are able to use a single stall, they don't feel comfortable with whoever, whatever, like, you know, just, it's in there, but I don't know if every student knows, you know, maybe if, and that's for any instance, that could just be a, whatever, it's just that they know they can go to a nurse, just to put that out there for students.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I would, I concur with, I forget who has said it, it's been said multiple times, and Ms. Sala mentioned as well. I think we do, it's not to be addressed right now, but I think working with Angelo and Mr. Kelly, and, you know, we do need to figure out, I don't know if the one bathroom in the nurse, single bathroom is enough, because we do have kids using it for medical reasons, and if we have kids who are also using it because they're uncomfortable for whatever reason, I don't know if that bathroom can sustain that. I also understand we can't let kids, you know, be able to lock themselves in other bathrooms, but I think we do need to kind of figure that out moving forward. I'm not sure about the facilities, I don't really know if the single toilet in the nurse's office, but certainly something that I think we warrant further discussion on the administration level. Thank you.
Were there questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Now we need to vote on the overall policy, as we have amended it. The only thing from the original one, I believe, that is to say, when they... The only thing from the original one, I believe, that is say, when there is a definition of cisgender, which is in the policy. Everything else has been addressed by the two amendments that were made. So that has a motion already.
Yes.
Yes. Just to be clear, so this motion, what the school committee will be voting on, is it adopting the policy to reflect the definition of cisgender as well as Jessica Sala's amendment regarding the gender transition plan, including measures on a monthly basis to work with the student to involve their parent guardian in that transition at some point, but ultimately leaving that discretion to the student. Is that clear? Clear for us. Clear? Okay. All right. Any other comments on it? The only thing I would say, it's the only thing, is we may want to look at the monthly part of it, but I would let it get going first before we realize and we can talk to administrators, maybe which would be every other month or something like that, but I have no problem with the way it is right there now, so. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Go ahead.
So, I need to read this, okay? "I am deeply concerned with the way that some community members, including but not limited to certain administrators, DEI leaders, and anti-hate group members that indirectly threatened and socially bullied school committee members by implicitly attacking, attacking their character, careers, and family. If you want to make Smithfield more inclusive, I suggest you work on your approach, on how to make progress with individuals of whom you have different perspectives then. While we're in the practice of defining words, we may need to look at the definition of the word hypocrisy, which is the practice of claiming to have moral standards or beliefs to which one's own behaviors does not conform. We need to do better than this. I am excited to move on to other important topics such as special education, capital improvements, and the monstrous goal of improving our academics, and I truly hope to see each and every one of you participate and be invested as much in those conversations as you were in this one. Thank you."
There's a number, the article number 13, which is, the school committee consider items to add to future agendas. I do have a couple. Guess what, the first one, bathrooms, okay? I sit on the capital committee, as does Bendelow, and we did get some capital money from the town last night. So one of the things that's been on our capital plan for some years is bathroom improvements at the high school, middle school. So we will probably be looking at using some of that and getting things started, and hopefully, whether, however it addresses or whatever, we will look at it in the country, I believe. I have done my due diligence on any of these things, because I've been following it for years. This, yeah. The, the second item that we should be looking at is, we have the athletic fields, there's going to be work done, hopefully done over, you know, between November and January, and we really need to look at a funding procedure to pay for the continued maintenance of the field and track, as well as some of the other facilities. I know that there's a group working on a tentative plan, if you will, but it'll essentially be something where the school committee will be charged for advertising or something like that, set it at a restricted fund, and utilize it to spend on the field, which, as you recall, we accepted the bids or whatever, is a 10-year guarantee. So at the end of 10 years, we're going to have the money, and based on current policy from the town council, we're not going to have enough, so we better come up with a separate funding source, or we're going to be sitting here, you know, nine years from now, wondering how we're going to upgrade it. So that's something else we will be discussing sometime this summer, hopefully, get those two going. Okay, if there are any others?
Just, yeah, I don't know if this would be part of our policy, or if this is something really at your discretion, but an idea I wanted to share with the committee is, I recently read an article of a school committee, I'm not sure if it was Barrington, or a couple school committees have reformatted their, how they present their agenda, and they engaged in something called like anchoring their public comment. And what I mean by that is, we have a lot of people who come out, not usually this many, but we have a lot of people come out to share their views, their concerns, their issues, but it can be super inconvenient, because public comment comes at the end, you never quite know when it's going to be, it might be a fast meeting, a short meeting. So something I'd like to plant the seed on is maybe looking at the feasibility of anchoring the public comment, and what I mean by that is, they have it as like one of the first agenda items, so that people know that, hey, it's 7 o'clock when the meeting starts, I can come in, I can make my comment, I can leave, and they can bet on that every time. I think it's just a respect for the, the community members and their time, and allowing them to more effectively voice their concerns. So I just want to plant that seed, if that's something, I don't know if that's feasible, I don't know if Mr. Clough has had experience with other communities doing that, but if it's something we could do, I'd love to see, you know, possibly happen.
I, we could look at it, I'm going to tell you, I have attended a couple of different committees that do that. I, if I was to sell me the public, would not like it, and they used to be called the Board of Regents. The Board of Regents used to have a thing you came in, and they said you had a specific amount of time, and you could talk, and whatever, and they hadn't brought up any particular topic yet, and so you kind of had to cram it all in there as opposed to, of course, they didn't take your comments on the actual subject when it came up, like we do. So, I mean, if we can look at it, I, the ones I've had, I've...
Yeah, if it doesn't work, if it's not going to work for us, then no, absolutely. I just, just something to look into.
Okay. Any further things? Yes, yes.
I did bring up locker rooms, and the idea of possibly, you know, changing, changing optional within the locker rooms, I don't know if that would be addressed, as long as the student has athletic wear, you know, they're welcome to change, but if they don't feel comfortable, it's real that you could, or whatever, maybe we could do that as well.
Okay. And there was nobody speaking on the public, portion of the, the public response, or the response, let's see, public forum, yes, so nobody signed up to that. Okay, then, we're going to take the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, second, all in favor, say aye.